The right side is ready.
They're ready.
All right, so since everybody's ready, we're gonna call this administrative conference to order. We will have our invocation by Councilman Fleury and our pleas by Councilman Emerson. Will you stand, please?
Let us pray. Almighty God, we give you thanks for this day. We pray, oh Lord, for our city and for our leadership, for our mayor. God, we lift these up and we'll make good decisions today. We pray now in thy holy name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk, you may call to roll, please.
Mr. Bradford?
Present.
Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Jenkins?
Mr. Corbin?
Present.
Mr. Fleury?
Present.
Ms. Lynch?
Mr. Bogin?
Here.
Thank you, your presence. Tomorrow, we will adopt the minutes of our previous administrative conference as well as our council meeting of September 13th. This time, we will have communications, recognitions, or awarding of our council members. Any council members have any recognitions?
I guess it falls more in the communications category, but if y'all don't mind, I just wanted to thank Latonya Bogin. Tanya is always so great and responsive, but I asked her last week to put together a list that you'll find in front of you that is the neighborhood associations in your respective council districts. What we're trying to do here is the MPC has been working with us in the master plan committee to get the Council of Neighborhoods back activated again. That was an organization that started and had some early successes, but due to the nature of neighborhood associations and the way that they set up their charter, they had officers who rolled off of their various neighborhood associations and thus rolled off of the main groups. So they stopped meeting regularly and it was a little difficult to maintain it. So there's been a lot of requests to kind of get that started again, and so the MPC has done outreach to the people that they knew of to try to get updated contact information. And Tanya also keeps a list of that as well, but we know that no one knows these districts better than the people that represent them, so we want to make sure that we get everybody's input. So if you could look over these lists, make sure that there's not anybody who's been omitted, or if there's an incorrect contact, or you just know that that person is not the contact person anymore, make that note for us. And then we will use these to work with, obviously, the different departments that also keep these lists, and the Shreveport Police Department, the Community Development Department. There's a number of departments that have these, but this is just one other opportunity for us to make sure that this is correct information that everybody's working off of.
We have a copy.
Absolutely.
We don't have a copy.
Yeah, well, I'll ask Tanya to print the master list out for you. Each of us just has the list of those that are identified in our district, and so I'll ask her to print out that list that has all of them and share that with y'all in case y'all...
Appreciate that.
And certainly what we'll do, what we're working towards here is making sure that it's an accurate list. So once we have that accurate list, we'll make sure that that's disseminated to every department that needs it, so.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilman, and that would be valuable, valuable information as we proceed in doing some other things. I see some corrections I'll share with you from our district. Any other communications or recognitions from Councilmen? Not Mayor Tyler?
I just have one announcement today, and we'll have the others tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow, CAO Crawford, my capable CAO, will be in charge of the outside of the House. I will be traveling to Baton Rouge for the recovery task force that the governor has appointed me to be a part of. And certainly, we want to be at the table so that we can get some of the funding up here from all the flooding back in March. So I'd like to try to get, you know, any concerns that you have today about agenda items, if that's okay. We'll be glad to work with you, even while I'm traveling tomorrow morning to go down to Baton Rouge.
Thank you, Mayor, for that announcement. I was wondering, you know, we have National Out coming up on the floor.
Absolutely.
And I saw an opportunity to use this list, to help solicit, proof to our, what are we gonna call it?
To our crime and violence event. And we have a name yet, but we've not finished pulling everything together. We plan to send something out. The next day or two, I won't be here, but we've been working on that, and I'm going back upstairs to finish it up.
Okay.
But it is, it's gonna be the violence and crime event for right now.
Is everybody's business up there?
Everybody's concern.
Concern?
Yes, sir. Everybody's concerned.
All right, we'll look forward to some more communication on that event coming up.
Absolutely, and we will have that ready to distribute, to disseminate to all of the various block party contacts. And I know the Shreveport Police Department is pulling that together so that we can distribute materials between elected officials and between the Shreveport Police Department, between the Fire Department. We will get a lot of flyers out to every one of those block parties, inviting them to come to the event.
Good, very good, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Emerson?
One more thing, and I just, I'm so glad the mayor mentioned that she wasn't gonna be here tomorrow, because I am gonna invite these people here tomorrow to share with everybody, but I wanted to make sure and share it as well, and I'm sure you're aware of it. But there is a group that's putting on a two-day sort of seminar in Shreveport called Reform Shreveport, and they are a group of people that are concerned with issues about transportation and accessibility for people who are maybe not a car, people who transport themselves in any other way but a car, and how to sort of look at our city and see potentials with that. And I want to thank the administration for information that they've provided that has been shared with that group, and also SporTran has done a great job of working with that group. So they're gonna come tomorrow to give a little bit more information about the event that they're planning. It is October 7th and 8th, if anybody wants to kind of jot it down on their calendar, but just wanted to mention it briefly and thank the administration for the information that they've provided that will help these people make some creative suggestions for, you know, things that we might be able to accomplish going forward.
Fantastic. Look forward to sharing with them. Okay, are there any other communications from any... Mayor, we wish you a traveling race on your trip down south.
Thank you, sir.
Be careful. Ports, property standards. If you might have any questions or inquiries regarding our property standards. Supreme, thank you. I sit down, we'll look forward to visiting with you later in the meeting. We received our revenue collection and security bond at our previous meeting, so tomorrow we are here for our master plan committee report. Tomorrow, council members, we will have a public hearing on ordinance 92, annexation ordinance, I see. I saw the fact sheet on it. Councilman Fleury, do you have any... Let me ask the administration, are you prepared to make your opening comments regarding the sentencing tomorrow?
Sure.
Okay. Is any, anything, you know...
It's a pretty straightforward annexation. One of the things that Mayor Tyler has always emphasized is not to enlarge the city to the detriment of the city, which has been done in the past. This is contiguous to the city property limits, all the property on the north side of Flu and Al Lucas is already in the city limits, so this will be connected at the Wallace and Flu and Al Lucas area. That's gonna be about 93 new home units in there for Phase 1. I think it's 127 for Phase 2, and that's a section we'll bring you later on, but that's gonna generate about $100,000 a year in property tax over anything that the city will pay. And so those will be new streets, new water, and so hopefully, we won't do anything for those for a long time, and we'll just collect the property taxes. So it's kind of a win-win for the city.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And that's in your district council, any...
Right on the line.
On the line of...
No, I would say Mr. Crawford has provided me with details, and I'm...
The council sheet, didn't we?
They do have the, they do have the information sheet on the...
I believe we provided you a sheet with showing you the benefits to the city.
Yeah, and the mayor, we're familiar with all of that. We just want to make sure if there's any issues or questions that we need to clear today, expedite it tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank for the information.
Thank you, sir.
Talk about adding legislation, Mr. Crawford. Are you familiar with any?
Not that the administration's aware of.
We have one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That was Mr. Corbin, I believe. It suspends certain provisions of Chapter 10 and 106 to allow the annual Camp Tiger Chili Cook-Off parking lot of the bus.
I didn't want District B to have all the fun.
They had all the fun. Chili, you said Chili Cook-Off?
Yeah.
Okay. We love chili. That's right, you know, District B's action.
I know, there's enough, there's enough fun to go around.
Okay, I have no requests or comments regarding items on the agenda today, so we may continue with, well, I guess there's no confirmation appointments.
There's not.
But we can continue with our consent legislation.
On consent agenda legislation to adopt ordinances and resolution, Resolution 170 accepts dedication of a 60-foot right-of-way for Favor Court and Humble Streets in Madelins Cove.
Okay. Any discussion or questions regarding this introduction of 170? Thank you, we may continue.
Resolutions on second reading and final passage are which require only one reading. Resolution 167 accepts the dedication of Z Drive right-of-way in Camp Bow Wow commercial. Resolution 168 authorizes the mayor to accept and execute a fiscal year 2015-2016 Choice Neighborhoods Planning Grant Amendment between the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and the City of Shreveport.
Are there any questions or discussion regarding 167 and 168?
These are both very positive.
All right, sitting on, you may continue.
The introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to October 11, 2016. Resolution 171 authorizes and provides for the waiver of permit fees, inspections, and other related fees for the construction of a house at 1613 Rock Springs Boulevard and Stone Lake Development. This is being done by the, I think, the Home Builders Association, and to be raffled off, and then the proceeds split between five nonprofits, Community Development, Holy Angels, The Hub, and Providence House. 172 accepts a donation from Shreveport Green, the Querby's Park Foundation. That's $100,000 donation for some upgrades to Querby's Park, specifically pruning and tree trimming of about 350 trees out there.
Any discussion regarding these resolutions? I was at the Stone Lake Neighborhood Association meeting, actually, last Monday. They made us aware that this project was coming. This is one of those, like the St. Jude Homes.
House for Hope.
House for Hope.
Yeah.
And they are proud to have it in their neighborhood. It's a gated community, very nice neighborhood, very safe neighborhood, and we look forward to this project coming in. Did you put a estimate value of this waiver?
It is, it's $1,500, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And that's on the fact sheet.
All right. Okay, any other discussion? Thank you, sir, you may continue.
Yes, sir. Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to October 11, 2016. Ordinance 95 is 2016 General Revenue Bond Ordinance, an amendment and restated General Revenue Bond Ordinance authorizing the issuance of time to time, from time to time of water and sewer revenue bonds for the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form to certain terms and conditions of said bonds, establishing funds and accounts relating to the said bonds, providing for the payment thereof in principal and interest, including a rate covenant relation thereto, providing with respect to the issuance of senior lien bonds and junior lien bonds, and providing for other matters in connection therein. Ordinance 96 is a series, ordinance number one, under 2016 General Revenue Bond Ordinance is a series ordinance pursuant to the 2016 General Revenue Bond Ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $100 million principal amount of water and sewer revenue bonds, Series 2016B, and not to exceed $20 million in principal amount of taxable water and sewer revenue bonds, Junior Lien 2016C of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, providing in a notice of intent given by Resolution Number 152 of 2016 adopted on August 9, 2016, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the 2016 General Revenue Bond Ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds to a group of underwriters led by Seabird...
Sisnerose.
How do you pronounce it?
Sisnerose.
Sisnerose. Shank and Company LLC pledging the next revenues of the city's combined water and sewer systems to secure such bonds, prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds and providing with other matters in connection therewith. Ordinance 97 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget and otherwise providing with respect thereto, this is for the sanitary, two things, sanitary sewer assessment Phase 1 and landscaping project on I-20, specifically the I-49 segments. Ordinance 98 is the first of two zoning cases. This is C-71-16 amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by amending the pub agreement attached to property located in the southwest corner of Ellerby Road and Flu and Al Lucas Road, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, Zone B2 PUD Neighborhood Business Plan Unit Development District with preliminary site plan approval. Ordinance 99 is zoning case number C-73-16, amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property bound by Hearn Westover Bib and adjacent alley immediately West Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R1D Urban One Family Residential to B1 Buffer Business District.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments or inquiries regarding introduction of these ordinances? Let me, let me start by, when I first saw 95 and 96, I was a little concerned. I called the mayor, and...
You did.
I love information, Mayor, and this was unfamiliar with me initially, but then I think the city attorney helped clarify some of my concerns. But I, again, and you can consider it if you please, that you will have a sector, a couple of sectors of meetings to sort of, for us newbies, the old guys may be familiar with it, but I, this is new to me, and I would appreciate if you would consider maybe having a little session like you did previously.
Like I did before.
And allow a couple of council members to have a time to come in and sort of enlighten us a little bit more on what this is about.
Glad to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other council members have any concerns or questions regarding these? Did the clerk say something?
No, no, just...
Sidebar.
Sidebar.
That's the way the lawyers do it. All right, you may continue, Mr. Clerk.
Ordinances on second reading and final passages. Ordinance 88 levying various taxes totaling 17 and 29 one-hundredths mils per dollar of all properties subject to add-to-law and taxation within the City of Shreveport for the year 2016 in the amounts and for the purposes described herein. Ordinance 89 levies a tax of 80 of 8 and 55 one-hundredths mils per dollar on all properties subject to add-to-law and taxation within the bounds of the Downtown Development District of the City of Shreveport for the year 2016 for the purposes as set forth herein. Ordinance 90 provides, providing for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $25 million in refunding bonds, Independent Stadium Project Series 2016 of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form, fixing the details, and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, providing for the payments of the principal of such bonds and for the application of the proceeds thereof to the refunding of certain outstanding obligations. Ordinance 91 creates and establishes West 81st Street and Cleveland Street as a one-way street from Linwood Avenue to 82nd Street, requiring vehicles to travel in a westbound to southbound direction only, ending at Cleveland Street. Ordinance 92 enlarges the city limits and boundaries of the City of Shreveport for the Flu and Al Lucas Established Subdivision Development in Section 7, T-16 North, R-13 West, Cattle Parish, Louisiana. That's the Lucian Field Estates subdivision. Ordinance 93 authorizes the Shreveport Airport Authority to dispose of property in the 5500 block of Greenwood Road described herein as surplus property. And ordinance 94 authorizes the mayor to execute a lease, a city-owned, I'm sorry, execute a lease of city-owned property to Planet Aqua Group.
On these, second reading ordinances, we have had a chance to review them, and are there any additional questions? Are there any additional questions?
I guess better stated for me to remember, are there any questions that we feel like would prevent a vote, being that the mayor won't be here tomorrow?
Sounds like a good idea.
Let's ask now or forever hold our peace.
Absolutely, thank you.
We can't do that, Jeff. I mean, I had some questions, I think most of mine are either answered or on their way to being answered.
You know, Mayor, I'm sorry, no, I just wanted to say, and I, it doesn't, it doesn't say anything other than for information, that I would ask that you make the Aqua, the Planet Aqua Group aware that we are a cashier city.
Oh, yes.
And that whenever opportunities are afforded, to try to utilize that status.
We do that with every department, just to ensure you, and we had that discussion again this morning, everybody who does contracting from any department has to keep that in mind. And so that's how we deal with that one, and then we get it by department, to make sure that we are all, you know, trying to make sure that we're offering opportunities.
I appreciate that, Mayor. I didn't want to mention it to them personally, I just wanted you to make that away with them.
We take care of it.
I don't want to scare them away.
No, no, we take care of it.
They ain't scared by that.
We take care of it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Crawford, where are we now?
We're tabled legislation, there's none coming off the table that the administration is aware of.
Is the clerk aware of any?
Not aware of any, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We're down to property standards appeals, and we believe we have three today.
All righty, very well, thank you.
Well, he's coming. May I just ask a couple of questions? If these ordinance on final passage, I think we've discussed these, I know we have.
Yes.
But if there are additional questions, I'll be glad to answer those after the meeting today, unless you want to ask something now.
No, I think we're clear. The council members clear? If we will, we'll visit with you individually.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right. All right, good afternoon. Good afternoon. Our first case today will be 3627 Darian Street. We've seen the case before. We now have a new owner, Mr. Cedric Thomas has sold the property to a Mr. Kevin Belcher, and what we're asking you to do is to send this back to the Property Standards Board so we can start the notification process over with, re-notify him, and if there are any issues, then of course he'll be back before you. I move that we will accept the recommendation from the Property Standard Director and refer this back to the Property Standard Board.
Second.
We move in second that this will be referred back to the Property Standard Board for their assistance. Any discussion?
Yes.
Please vote.
Only, I probably would vote no, but only because I know Kevin, the guy who bought the place, and I know that he'll take care of it in a timely manner and get it to where it should be. So for that reason only, I vote this.
But referring it back is a legal necessity because it's a new owner and we have to start that notification process.
Right, but I'm just wanting to say that...
He's vouching for the new guy. Make that a part of the records now. I'm a whole jury responsible.
Mr. Chairman, is this to the board or just to the Property Standards Board?
Back to... Property Standards Board. The process. Appeals. Process. Back in the process. Right. All right, thank you. Please vote. Most passes at the big screen, 5202, out of the chamber. Okay, thank you, next. All right, our next case is 1107 Kimberly. This is a property that came before you two weeks ago, and Mr. Edelen had certain tasks that he was supposed to meet. But there was one task that was predicated on further... Right, right. On further consideration. And right now, the only thing, I can see where the grass has been cut, but it's grown back, it has not been edged, and...
What's your recommendation on it?
I would proceed with the demolition. The structure itself, let me move on a little bit further, it's still unsecured at the windows.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Clerk.
I was about to say, before you vote...
Yeah, I was going for...
Mr. Chairman, who made the second?
Mr. Emerson.
Thank you.
Uh, is, is Mr. Emerson, Evelyn?
Evelyn.
Will you come up, please, sir? We are considering your property for, we're addressing your property. There was two issues that we instructed you to do for us by today. One was to get the premise...
Okay, I hired some people to do things, paid $100 for a guy to get the stuff off of the roof. He also brought a guy that did the edging. We thought we did all the edging properly. I asked the city to bring a trash can out there, which they haven't done yet, and last time we were here, Mayor Tyler mentioned that she gets phone calls constantly. It's probably from Dwight Barnes across the street that's giving me a lot of trouble. He's broken into the house, and he's done a lot of vandalism and broke some windows and stuff.
Is that documented, or is that just hearsay?
I just know from years.
How do you know?
I know from years, people, people that live next door testified that he was doing stuff, and I've just had a lot of problems with him. I've had trouble with his son. We, I had a little dog that ran across the street, and he grabbed my dog, and he was gonna give it to the dog pound, and we had the police involved on that.
Let me ask you this now, we're considering this very seriously, okay? We ask you for the care premise to be addressed. We also ask you to bring with you today the individual that you claim is going to rehabilitate the property. Where is he?
Yeah, he said he was coming, and I left a message on his machine this morning, and he has 20 properties. I don't know why he's not here. I haven't talked to him today. I tried to talk to him, and I left a message, but he will get it done. I tried to get a permit so that he could start to work on the Eves and stuff like that, but they said they needed to talk with you before they'd give me a permit so that he could start.
You don't have a permit.
Huh?
You don't, you do not, you did not get a permit? That was the third request we asked you to do. Now, there were three requests. Get the property cleaned up, bring the gentleman who's gonna clean up the property, then have the permit so that we'll know that you was gonna move forward with your good-faith effort that you agreed to. You said on good faith, I will get these three things done today.
You cut out on me.
Okay, you, you made us somewhat of a commitment that you would get the property cleaned up, that you would have the gentleman who was gonna work and rehab the property, as well as getting a permit by today, and those things have not been done.
I've done, there may be a few little limbs and stuff, there's a big pile of limbs and things out front that we worked on. I paid $100 to do, for a guy to do some stuff. I don't know why David's not here, but I'll talk with him, and I don't know. He's done a lot of stuff for me before, but he's got 20 properties, he's got a van full of tools and stuff, and he's got some other guys that can help him do it. He will get it done.
Well, let me, let me make you aware that we've heard excuses before, and there's been a motion made...
I've done a lot of work since we were here before to clean it up and do stuff.
Well, not by, I mean, sure, we saw some of the grass cutting, but as it relates to...
That's a, that's a picture from before. We got a lot of that off the roof.
No, it says, it said today.
There's something a little over to the left, the guy was supposed to come back and finish that.
Okay.
And I got a guy down at the end of the street, at the depth, that keeps him, is cutting the grass, and he's doing it slower than I thought.
There has been a motion made by the council members. There has been a motion made by the council members that we will move forward with this property in regards to it being a, 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 a habit, I saw, and has been in violation of so many of our codes, that we will move forward with acting that it be demolished. That's our, that has been moved and seconded by this council.
I'm sorry. You're saying you're going to demolish it?
That's the motion. I just want you to be aware of it, and, and...
I, I'm, I'm, that, that's, that's a nice brick house. I, I just, I've, I've had problems with vandalism and things like that, you know? I, I will get it straight, and David Harris will help me.
Well, it's, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the hands of the council members to vote right now, but if we vote in affirmative, then Mr. Green will tell you your options of, of, from, from this point. Will you disagree? Make him aware if his option, if the council votes...
I can't hear what you're saying.
I'm saying the council's going to vote on the motion, and if the council affirms the, the motion, then Mr. Green will get with you and tell you what options you have to, to actually prevent us moving forward with the demolition, okay?
Okay.
The council is ready to vote. The council is ready to vote. Any, any other discussion from the council members? Motion is that we will move with the recommendation of the Property Standards to have this property demolished. Please vote. And motion passes 5202, out of the chamber. Okay, Mr. Edison, that this has been moved, that we will move forward with demolition of your property. If you would visit with Mr. Green, he will tell you what options you have from here, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry that you did not fulfill your commitment to this body, okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Edelen, Mr. Edelen, do you understand what the chairman has just advised you of?
Sorry?
Do you understand what the chairman has advised you of just, just now?
He said I could talk to Green and find out, you know? Of course, I can also file a lawsuit and stuff, but I'm trying to, you know, I'm peeling fast as I can, and I, my trucks are down, and I'm, I just got a lot of problems.
Okay. I just want to be clear that you did, you do understand the instructions of the chairman. That's correct.
Instructions are talk to Green about other options.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Next case.
Okay, our next case is 349 East 75th Street. Okay. Well, I have talked to Mr. Avery about the property. He's asked for 60 days to demolish the structure himself, uh, or to sell, whichever comes first, so... The structure is not a hazard to where it's falling down, and he will secure the one door that needs to be secured this week.
Mr. Green, and I talked about this earlier, and I will support that and make a motion that we give this 60 days.
Back. Move in second that we will postpone this for 60 days. Are there any discussion?
Second motion?
Councilman Corbin made the motion. Councilman Flores seconded the motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes 5202, out of the chamber today. Any further cases, Mr. Green?
November 22nd.
Is the date postponed?
November 21st.
Okay. All righty. Thank you. That being of your report.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you, sir. All right. You feel, you, you think you, you need to speak with him? Anybody else?
I will. I'll get with him.
Under your association, okay, all right. I just want him to know his rights. Okay. All right. We're down to, uh, there's no other appeals today. I see in none for tomorrow. So we're here from our officers, council members, boards, committee chairs.
Mr. Chairman, we will have a report from the Audit and Finance Committee tomorrow.
Oh, great. Okay. Yes?
We'll be setting an Infrastructure Committee meeting shortly.
Okay. Very well. I'm going to ask the clerk to, we're getting to the end of the year, we're in, and the committees that have not met, I think all the committees have met this year, but those, Mr. Clerk, who have not met recently, if you might let the chair know so, I want to, I want to at least clear out the year with, with a, on a positive note, as, as we have met, I think, Councilman Everson said us on a good path last year, and I think we've, we've kept that up, but I just need to know who have not met, you know, and at least it lasts three months so that we can at least have them too.
I would love if we could find another date for a before committee meeting in the next month or so. We do have some updates on some things.
Okay. We get down to a lot of meetings now, so we got to, we got to balance them, which is, which is, you know, which is business. We, you know, we're here to take care of the city's business, and we do that. Any other committees need to, need to speak at this time? All right. Does the clerk have a report?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I can't say because of time I don't have a report.
I have time. Wow, okay. We within, we within an hour.
We can wait a few minutes.
Okay, we'll, we'll postpone your report. Till later time.
I have, I have...
Please, Mayor.
I have one. I did not have time to send out this morning to you some events that will be taking place this week, so I wanted to make sure that you all knew that on Wednesday afternoon there will be a groundbreaking for the new soup kitchen, and of course, City of Shreveport did help and support that with CBPG monies.
That's from these Christian services, uh...
Christian services, right. And C.A.O. Crawford is going to be there on my behalf of the city, and we inviting all the council members to come, since the city, city council, all of us, did support that effort with some funding. Also, on Thursday night, the Martin Luther King Health Clinic will hold its annual meeting. I'm not sure about the table there, but I'll need to check to see what, how many seats we have available for that particular clinic, because I know we support them also, so we'll get something out to you, but I kind of want you to look at your calendars today, if you will, to see if you can make some of those events. Those are the only ones I have right now.
Mayor, thank you, and thank you for always considering the council in these endeavors.
Absolutely. It takes us all doing it together.
Yeah. That's a, I mean, that's a good gesture, though, to include the council. I mean, all the mayors have done it all the time.
Thank you.
But you have been, what you do is appreciated, and that effort. And I'm, I'm going to follow it one more time. I'm getting ready to have a, a Small and Emergent Business Task Force meeting, and I would like to visit, I guess with your share coordinator before I do that, and get the document that I requested from her.
Right, and she has it. We were trying to pull together the, the other, all departments and what all has happened with, you know, I F Share and MBE.
Very well.
You know, providers, so I'm trying to make sure we get all of that information for you so that you'll have kind of an, an up-to-date report.
Sure.
But she does have something already done, it's just not complete.
Okay.
I'll, I'll have her to get that to you. When, when you, you didn't give us a date on the meeting.
Well, I, I didn't give you a date because I, you know, we, we expanded the committee to some specific entities that are involved, so I wanted to be prepared to, before I set the date, that we had the information.
Yeah, right.
Because, I mean, that's not the only thing that we discussed, but it's, it's primary thing that we discussed. But it would be, it would, it would most likely be in October, sometime in October.
Okay. All right.
And do you, do you have any indication of the applications for the national out yet? I mean, how are they coming in?
The applications for...
The block, the block parties, the national out block party. They'll be here next Tuesday, isn't it?
It is. It is.
The police department, the police department accumulates those lists, and they'll be provided to the council.
Okay.
You're saying applications are list.
Well, I mean, they have to make an application to get on the list.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no question. Okay.
They'll get that to us.
Yeah.